The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the joint meeting of the Board of Finance and City Council for May. I'd like to start off our meeting with rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of the joint-meeting agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint-meeting held on April 13, 2021, and those minutes have been circulated.
Move to approve. Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is the Consent Calendar consisting of items A through N. Are there any items that any member of the Board of Finance or City Council would like to withdraw from the Consent Calendar for further discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
Motion to approve. Second?
Discussion? Then hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the monthly revenue and expense report presented by the Controller.
Good evening, everyone. Just some quick updates. As you can see in the report that was handed out to everyone, the general fund revenues are coming in, and as expected, the tax collections are coming in as we thought they would after April 1st, so you'll see that we are at 99.2% of the budget on the current tax revenue levy, which does not include the supplemental motor vehicle tax, which that right now is at 1.7 million. We had budgeted 1.4, and billed was 2.2. So we do expect that that will come in much higher as we get towards the end of the fiscal year. I believe last year, we had the similar trend. We were at 1.86, and we ended up collecting over $2 million last year. So I think that is a good trend, and I think that's on target as well. You have your graphs of the percent collected through May 4th that the tax collector has provided, and you'll see we're at 98.67% of the real estate build collected for real estate, 98.8 of personal property, and 94.68% of motor vehicle, which motor vehicle always does tend to lag behind the collection on real estate and personal property. Conveyance fees, we've been -- no, I'm sorry, skipped right over building permit. Revenues are at 131% of budget, again generating a nice surplus there, so I anticipate that will continue through the end of the fiscal year as well. And then conveyance fees, with two months left, we are at 186% of the budget. We've collected 1.4 compared to 875 last year, so doing extremely well on the conveyance fees. And I expect we would probably come in a little bit higher in that regard as well, looking at our city clerk over there. Investment earnings, that is one area that has lagged behind, which we have talked about. We anticipate that will come in around the 250-260 range through the end of June 30th. Right now, we're at 39% of the budget, or $217,000. I'll just mention here, and I'll talk about it briefly later, the guidelines did come out from the Treasury, and I know they were clear, and it did say in a few areas where we could recover some lost revenues. I think it's just a matter of how we want to apply those funds, whether we want to look back and see if we can apply them to some of the investment earnings that we lost over the last year and a half. And there's really not clear, clear guidance on it, but I know it has been mentioned in some of the documentation that I've read. So I'll come back at a further date, and I think after the -- you know, the mayor's putting together a group to kind of look at the ARPA funding and what that will be used for, and whether we want to use it for some of this, but that will be for discussion down the road. Again, police private duty, actually, we're generating a bit of a surplus there, which is good. It will help offset some of the administrative costs that we have with administering that program. So as you can see, we've collected almost 1.7 million, and the expenditures have been about 1.3. On the expenditure side, not too much to talk about here. Departments have been pretty much keeping things in line. I know this on the Joint Board approvals, what you just did, there were some departments that came forward with some transfers so they could purchase some items that they requested for next year. They've had some savings this year, so they moved it up into this fiscal year, so that will use up some of their monies that they might have available. Two areas that just keeping a watch on is the compensated absence account, which there were a lot of retirements this year, and then the fire department OT. Compensated absences, I believe that one, we will be able to cover with contingency contractual obligations, and the fire department OT, you might notice it's pretty much expended through the report that you have, that will come from full-time wages. We took a quick look at that and think that that account will cover most of that with all of the vacancies that they've had there. As I mentioned, the guidelines did come out. I'm still going through them. The mayor and I have not yet had a chance to talk about them since they came out, but basically, they're not that much more detailed than what we had kind of thought originally. So we'll decipher through that as we go through the next couple of days and probably sit through as many webinars as we can on them. I know I've already signed up for a couple of them just to get more clarification on them. We did sign up for -- or I did sign up on the Treasury website to try and start the process to receive the funds, because we are a direct recipient, we should be able to get that money fairly quickly, and we would be getting the first half of that money. And that's it on the ARPA money, unless anybody has any questions on that. Again, not too, too much to report. I kind of did go through what came out yesterday, but still need time to go through it.
Are there any questions of the Controller? This is what the interim
Yeah.
final guidance looks like. So we will be working on this, and hopefully, the task force will be able to help us weed through some of that and develop some parameters that will be beneficial.
Just two other quick things. The budget adoption is set for May 25th for joint-meeting approval. That is immediately following the Board of Finance meeting on that date, and audit planning has already started, so that is scheduled for this week with the auditors. So it seems like they just left, but they're starting again. And that's all I have, unless there are any other specific questions. Thank you.
The next item is any other business proper to come before said meeting. I'll probably duplicate this at the City Council meeting, but it is appropriate as a Board of Finance item to talk about the American Rescue Plan Task Force. So I felt it was important with the amount of money that is flowing to the community. We are receiving $17 million direct from the federal government for COVID mitigation and other aid through the American Rescue Plan. And then we learned last week that we are receiving another $11 million through the county allocation for Hartford. So that is a grand total of $28 million. So with that comes an incredible responsibility to ensure that there is accountability and transparency, especially in an election year, and especially in the unfortunate political climate that we have here in Bristol, with the opposing party more interested in discussing issues that are non-issues as opposed to $28 million. So I felt it was important to ensure the integrity of that process so that we're not distracted, because $28 million that cannot be folded into the city budget is going to take quite a bit of time to work out the best and highest use over the next three years. So with that being said, I put together what I think is a really strong panel with bipartisan support of different parties and different facets of the community. For the Board of Finance, the chairman and the vice chairman, John Smith and Orlando Kelfi, will be on it, as well as Commissioner Mekowski, who has an investment background. I've invited Cindy Bombard, the president and CEO of the Central Connecticut Chambers of Commerce. I've invited Eric Clemmons, who's a retired ESPN commentator and current president of the Bristol chapter of the NAACP. I've invited Michael Dumas, who's a member of the Public Works Commission, who also holds an MBA in Finance, as does Orlando. He serves as an audit manager at People's United Bank. And Mickey Golwasser from the city's Economic and Community Development Commission, as well as Howard Schmelder from that commission, who's a retired banker. Glenn Heiser, who's a member of the city's Ten Year Capital Improvement and Strategic Planning Committee, who also holds an MBA in Finance. He also currently serves as the Chair of the Bristol Health Board of Directors. Malcolm Huckabee, who serves on the city's Parks Commission and is the Vice President of Investments at Capital Securities and Management, will be joining us. Thomas O'Brien, who's an elected member of the city's Board of Education, also with a finance background. He's going to be a critical liaison, because the Board of Education actually received their own allocation of almost $19 million. So while we have no jurisdiction over that, I think it's important that we leverage all of our resources and are aware of which side of the House is doing what, and that there could be opportunities for some of these items that we'd like to pursue to move over to the Board of Ed column, and likewise, some of their items might be able to be moved over to our side. So he will play that role. Donna Osatch, who's the president of the United Way, will be joining us, as will Susan Sudecki, the president and CEO of the Main Street Community Foundation, and also Councilman Proleski, who also is a retired banker, so to speak, a lawyer during the day, and serves on our Economic Community Development Commission as well. So of those 15 members, seven are Republicans, so I hope that that will dispel any of the constant criticisms that we have that we are a one-party, rule, rubber-stamp type of city council. This is too important to politicize. It's too much money, and it's too important to Bristol. So we'll be presenting that tonight at the City Council and making those task force appointments official. If there's no other business, I'll entertain a vote to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will start the City Council meeting promptly at 7:00 PM, which is five minutes from now. Those who are tuning in from the virtual meeting, you can stay right where you are. The meeting will roll over. Thank you. Okay, we're going to get started for our City Council meeting at 7 o'clock, a few minutes after. I'd like to welcome everyone to our monthly meeting for May. We have opening ceremonies, and to start off, we are going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the members of the City Council to introduce themselves, starting on my far left. Mary Fortier, District 3.
Brittany Barney, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Scott Rosato, District 1.
Greg Han, District 1.
Peter Kelly, District 2.
And as part of our opening ceremonies, I would like to ask those of you who either approached the podium or my colleagues on the dais to remember to be very close to the microphone when you speak to allow everyone to hear you, especially our friends who are joining us virtually. For our moment of reflection this month, it is Mental Health Awareness Month for the month of May, and I'd like to take a moment to think about all of the Bristol residents who are struggling with mental health issues, anxiety, post-COVID anxiety, as well as substance misuse, and hope that all of the services, public and partnerships that we have put in place will be a help to those families. Thank you. The second item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting of April 13, 2021. Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
Second?
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is public participation. We will start in chambers, and then we will ask virtually if there's anyone who would like to speak. We have one participant who is in chambers tonight, and that is Orlando Kelfi, who would like to talk about veterans banners.
Good evening, everyone. There's a program that my wife and I discovered when we were out of state in a few little boroughs of about 5,000 people in the Pittsburgh area that actually hung banners dedicated to their hometown heroes through their streets. So we came back and approached the Veterans Council just a couple of months ago and asked them if they thought we could use this program to honor our hometown heroes. This year, they are honoring the Korean War veterans, and because it was missed last year due to COVID, we wanted to make sure that those people who sacrificed their lives were honored. So the Veterans Council saw the program, looked at some of the ideas, and eventually said yes, they'd like to go forward with it for this year. Next year, we're going to focus on the Vietnam veterans. These are the people, the Bristol residents, whose names are on the memorials that are on the boulevard. So after talking with the Veterans Council, we went to the Parks Commission and asked them of their thoughts for the ideas, and of course, they approved it. So at this point, myself, along with Scott Rosato and his team, led by Jeff Mashad, have come up and developed designs for what the banners are going to look like. The order is going in tomorrow, and they should be ready to be hung the week of the week of the last week of May prior to Memorial Day. The intention is to hang them from Memorial Day to Veterans Day. When we're finished with them, if there are family members that are around, they're welcome to have their banner. So I would like to just show the opening banner that we have, which is dedicated to the Korean veterans. And on the back of that is a photograph of one of the veterans, and this is an example. So you'll see this gentleman here, served in the Marine Corps, shows it's in the Korean War. And then there's a picture, well, we can get pictures. And then for those that don't have a picture, it'll be the ring inside. So this is the program that we're going to roll out, and we're going to showcase down the boulevard. So right now, there are 29 light poles. 14 of them have flags on them. They're alternating, so these are going to be every other light pole as well. And so that's just the program that we're bringing to Bristol, and we're excited that everyone has really embraced this. It's moved along very quickly, and the hope is that it expands and that other communities in Bristol -- or I'm sorry, in Connecticut will see what we're showcasing and perhaps pick up on that idea as well. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing them, especially with the boulevard celebrating 100 years.
In addition to that, besides the Korean War vets, we're also going to be recognizing General Edward Wazinski, who was Bristol's most decorated WWII soldier. So his banner will be hung as well with the Korean War vets on that day.
Thank you, Orlando. Great idea.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to address the City Council that perhaps did not have the opportunity to sign up for public participation? Hearing none. We will turn to those attending virtually. Is there anyone that is joining us from online that would like to talk? Hearing none. We will move on to announcements, starting on my far left, I believe. Councilman Barney, you have one?
I do.
Into the microphone.
And I promise I'm not reading Facebook. I'm reading my announcement from the phone. So I just wanted to give an announcement that tomorrow, the Bell City Diner's famous milkshakes, which I'm not sure if anybody has had a chance to enjoy, are going to be featured on the Visit Western Connecticut social media channels, so Facebook and Instagram. So check out those sites to see their spotlight on a really cool new business in Bristol. So check it out.
And Councilman Han?
Yes. Since last June in 2020, the mayor's office City Council has been working with the United Way on the Farmers to Family program, handing out food. And I thought we'd take a look back and just see how effective it's been in the economic impact. Since that time, we've distributed 25,245 boxes with a total weight of 877,500. And then, of course, the total cost, which was $915,525, that's almost a million dollars worth of food having been handed out over the past year, and that's over 17 events so far. Our next giveaway is on May 22nd, and then we are also approved for June as well. So this program will keep going as it's been so effective here in Bristol. Thank you.
An interesting stat that we had on the Bristol Cares call last week is that prior to COVID, Bristol had a 13% food insecurity rate amongst households, which literally means 13% of households in Bristol on a weekly basis do not have enough food in their household. And that number jumped to 16% during COVID. So as much as we believe that these food distributions are helping, there's more to be done, and the Bristol Cares Committee, as well as some of our other social safety net organizations, are working on some long-term strategies. And I think it's one of those silver linings that we've talked about, that we didn't realize that we had this issue or the digital divide issue until COVID hit, and all of us had to pivot pretty quickly. So thank you for that. I feel like I can feel those boxes and the weight of those boxes right now.
That's why I was smiling, yes.
That's also been a great cross-department, interdepartmental collaboration, along with the United Way. We've had several city departments cooperating, our CERT team, police, fire, Public Works. Many of them have come down and helped us, so it's great to see that it's having an impact. Are there any other announcements? Hearing none. We're going to move on to the Consent Calendar. Councilman Proleski.
Your Honor, can we remove 5H from the Consent Calendar?
Yes. Are there any other items to be removed? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar, items 5A through K, with the exclusion of H.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And for item H, of which Councilman Proleski is recusing himself, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to reports and committee reports. First up is from the Real Estate Committee. Councilman Han?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion. I hereby move that the city of Bristol enter into an exclusive right-to-sell listing contract with Keller Williams Realty to sell the following properties: 801 Burlington Avenue and lot numbers 88, 102, and 106 Kill Martin Avenue. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second?
Discussion? I'd like the record to show that I asked Councilman Han to remove 43 East Main Street from that motion. That property has some remediation issues that we need to address. It is also within the wetlands and a flood plain, so I do not feel that it is appropriate to put for sale at this time until we have some opportunities to assess. There's no other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Agenda items 6B, C, D, E, and F are all motions from the Ordinance Committee to set public hearings on changes or eliminations or possible eliminations of current city ordinances. In 6B, it affects Sections 22-43 through 22-62, and it pertains to providing sewage disposal systems. That is currently regulated by the Bristol Burlington Health District, and that public hearing is at 5:10. In 6C, it affects Sections 3-32 through 3-39 pertaining to public dances. Yes, that's right, public dances. And we're working with the Police Department, and it's an ordinance that just currently isn't user enforced. That public hearing will be at 5:15. Come early. In Section 6D, it affects Sections 11-31 through 11-37 pertaining to air pollution control. We're looking to perhaps delete that as it's already regulated by DEEP and the EPA. And 6E affects Sections 9-16 through 9-43, licensing of food vendors, and that's currently regulated by the Bristol Burlington Health District. That public hearing is at 5:20. And 6F is from our Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Community Services Department, and it affects Sections 16-5 for a new position within the department to provide that position with enforcement powers for regulations in the parks. With that, Your Honor, in accordance with Sections 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments as provided to the Court of Ordinances are hereby introduced, and I hereby move that the time and place of June 1, Tuesday afternoon, at the times presented for each of those public hearings be held at the first-floor meeting room, City Hall 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, to be set for the holding of five public hearings thereon by the Ordinance Committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearings and the proposed amendments to the Court of Ordinances as required by city charter.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank Madam Clerk for her help structuring that this morning. Your Honor, we have a new -- or a motion that we'd like to bring to the floor that didn't get out to the agenda. I hereby move to bring to the floor the adoption of an ordinance, Chapter 7, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 1, Section 7-17, open building requirements for consideration by the City Council.
Is it building or burning?
Did I say building?
Yeah.
Excuse me. Thank you. Burning.
I'll second.
The motion has been made to bring the item to the table, and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, this adoption is work between Corporation Council, the Ordinance Committee, and the Fire Marshal, and it's really revising an existing ordinance, and it's designed to make the ordinance more user-friendly and better-defined. We're hopeful that we consider this tonight, because the timing is perfect for this, the implementation as the spring and summer approaches. I hereby move that Section 7-17 of the open burning requirements of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol is hereby amended to read as presented. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol.
Second?
Discussion?
Thank you for moving on that so quickly. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other committee reports, starting on my far left. None for me, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one quick committee report for the Cemetery Committee. They have bid out right now for an opportunity to help manicure some of our historic cemeteries, so notify your favorite local landscaper. It is posted on the city's website. I also shared it on my Facebook page to try to get some more exposure for it. In the past, the Cemetery Commission has sadly not had enough interest in this, so I hope that if you know someone that would be able to fit that need, that you can notify them. It's a great opportunity for a local landscaper, and it helps our city just with a beautification purpose. So check that out, and please submit your favorite friends to that request. Thank you.
Councilman Proleski?
Your Honor, may I add one more from the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Art Magnet School Committee. The committee continues to meet monthly. Construction is full-blown go mode. If you've gone by the building, you see some significant If you've gone by the building, you see some significant changes to the outside of the building. I think it looks tremendous. The addition, the footings for the addition to the westerly side of the building are in place, and you'll see that they'll start on actual construction. The mayor, City Council members, other Sydney personnel had a tour this past month of the building, and they plan to have more community outreach or forums to answer questions to community members, and it's going pretty well. The reserve accounts are in good order, and it's moving along inside the building as well. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Rosado.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank the Bristol Police Department for inviting the City Council and the Police Commissioners to an educational session regarding law enforcement two Saturdays ago, I believe, yes, in its security measures. It was a great, informative session, seeing the eyes of, through the eyes of the policemen who serve us every day. Hopefully, we can develop a similar program and engage our community, and I think it's well worth it. Peter Kelly also attended, although he didn't get to shoot with us, but...
Shoot tasers, right?
Tasers and live simulation. So it was very informative.
That's probably for the best, that Councilman Kelly was not there.
No, I'm a pretty good shot. But if I could just add that Chief Gould has put together quite a team. He sat there like a proud parent throughout the presentation, and for good reason, because they're very sharp young men and very passionate and well-trained. And any citizen of Bristol that had the opportunity to sit through a program like that would be equally as impressed.
Absolutely. And to that, this is actually National Law Enforcement Week, and we are approaching National Law Enforcement Day, which is Saturday, May 15th, also known as Peace Officers Memorial Day. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. So thank you to all those who serve and protect us every day. That was just a little bit of history on that. I also just want to recognize Doug Trillo, as he is our Parks May Spotlight. His leadership on the Muzzy Field project ensured that the field was in A-plus shape and ready for the season. While Muzzy Field has officially opened, the new field is in pristine shape. I believe they actually played a game there the other day, right?
Central Eastern.
Yeah, and it actually looks better than some professional baseball fields. I also like to thank the Parks Crew for their dedication and paying attention to every detail to make sure the renovation process went through without a hitch. So if you want to check out any games or the calendars for the game, check out www.bristlerec.com. Also, tomorrow, May 12th, we'll actually be at Muzzy Field for the 2021 Youth Recognition Awards Night. We are recognizing youth in our community for all their involvement and things to that nature, especially during this past year. Volatiran hours were at the utmost. We didn't expect such a high impact that we did. So kudos to all the young people still volunteering in our community, and thank you for all you do. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Han.
Yes, from the Arts and Culture Commission, there's going to be a community-wide hunt for glass art hidden throughout Bristol, starting on Memorial Day. It's sponsored by the six museums in Bristol and the Bristol Arts and Culture Commission. Hand-blown glass, just like this, is going to be hidden in public places throughout Bristol. You'll find them in a mesh bag with a card explaining what you have found. In particular, it says, "You are one of a kind. Congratulations, you have found a Bristol Art and Seek glass treasure." And then instructs you to go to Facebook. Some will be easier to find, some are going to be very hard to find, but there's going to be 100 pieces will be hidden at different times throughout the year. So some may not be found for years. I've seen other programs do this, and they do sit there for a while. Go to Facebook page, Art and Seek, Bristol, Connecticut, for more information and possibly some clues. The artwork is done by glass blower Peter Greenwood. He does a phenomenal job, and he was very kind to help us out here. So that's the Environmental Learning Centers, Bristol Historical Society, American Clock Museum, Imagination, Memorial Military Museum, and New England Carousel Museum, along with the City Arts and Culture Commission. And I want to thank Morgan Ergo for coming to us last year with this idea, and with the intent of doing it last year, but because of COVID, it had to get postponed. So this Memorial Day, be looking for your treasures. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I have a school readiness report, and I'd like to start it off by saying that we need community and legislative support. The state-funded childcare programs throughout the state, school readiness, and CDC are attempting to get the governor and members of the allocation committee to get increased funding for the reimbursement rate for these programs. They have not been increased in their reimbursement rate since 2015, and we're hopeful it's going to happen because if it did not, it could be catastrophic. And the reason being, it would mean that many parents couldn't work, not to say the program's closing or being adversely affected, the staff, you know, et cetera. It could really have a ripple effect on the economy, and we certainly don't want that to happen. And Hubert Humphrey, perhaps a fair amount of people in here never have heard of him or don't know much of him. He was a two-time U.S. Senator and Vice President as well, had a quote, and I think it's applicable here, and I'm paraphrasing, but it says, "One of the moral tests of government is how that government treats those who are in the dawn of life, the children." So we can't fail, we can't afford to fail this moral test. It's that important. On a lighter and but-important note, it's still, there's still time to register for kindergarten. It's upticked a bit. We still need about 125 more registrants, but we're heading in the right direction. And you can go to the Board of Education website under central registration, under kindergarten registration, to do that. And I was asked to also speak of, there is also room for pre-K children in the school readiness program as well. It has openings. So contact Bristol Preschool Child Care Center or the Imagination Museum of Early Learning for details. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional committee reports to come to the forefront? Hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. Last month, we discussed the hardship with the charter on several fronts, with the difficulty of some of the language pieces of it that are extremely old and antiquated. And we discussed that as this charter revision wraps up its work, that it might be time to seek a consultant to assist us with an overhaul. So I'm bringing that item back under unfinished business and opening it up for conversation in case anybody has had any additional thoughts.
Your Honor, I definitely think it's necessary. I mean, even with the Ordinance Committee bringing forth some of the items that they have going to public hearing, if you read through that dance ordinance, it's from 1967, so civil rights era, and has these rules for police presence at dances up to, you know, the jurisdiction and decision of others. And I think that embedded in our charter and our ordinances, we're going to find these things, like you said, antiquated, but also just totally outdated in the way that we live our lives today. I think it's important that we invest in the future of Bristol by making sure that the rules that we govern our city by are clear, understandable, they're in a language that we all relate to, and they are aligned with modern lives. It's just, it makes sense to do, especially as we see the ways in which people can interpret the things that are in it now. So I think it's an important thing that we can't ignore, and I think we should do it as soon as possible.
Councilman Proleski.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've served on three charter revision committees, and we've been talking about this forever. If you talk to anyone who serves and volunteers on these committees over the years, they all come to the same conclusion that there's so much work to be done. And we've had all kinds of thoughts in working with Corporation Counsel, as I do, about ways to do this, maybe hiring interns and hiring law students, but to do this, do it right, it's more than worth the money.
Okay. Councilman Ford, dear?
Well, I wanted to make a motion, Your Honor. I'm totally in agreement with what the others have said. I think that there's many things with our charter that make it not just hard to understand, but not as usable as it could be for all of us that sit here and govern, and departments, and for our citizens. So I'd like to make a motion that we send to the Board of Finance a recommendation or a request to hire a consultant so that they can begin the work as suggested by this last charter, this current charter revision commission. They had some specific things listed in their report they would like that expert to do before the next charter revision commission is formed. So I think it's appropriate that we do it now and get that process going to hire a consultant.
Second.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded. So to continue discussion on this side, is there anybody who has additional comments? Okay, so I guess a question to our controller. We would send this request for funding to the Board of Finance in the hopes that either through the surplus available by June 30th, we could eck out some money, or we would go for an appropriation to add it to the budget that is poised to be approved. Okay. All right, so to Corporation Counsel, we would need some guidance from you as to what an appropriate motion would look like in terms of a range of funds that would meet those needs. Okay. Okay, great, thank you. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also, under unfinished business, I didn't add it to the agenda, but we've typically at this point talked about our COVID response. This week, there was the announcement that 12-16-year-olds are now eligible for Pfizer. So we had a quick call today with all of our partners, and we are very fortunate in Bristol to have many people working with the mayor's office and the Bristol Burlington Health District to affect appropriate vaccine coverage, including a grant that was recently received by the Health District for vaccine hesitancy and equity, so we can reach communities that might have cultural, transportation, technology barriers, which we find is often happening. About two weeks ago, we partnered with the State Department of Public Health, and they have a program with Griffin Health where vans were coming into Bristol. And over those two weeks, and in addition to the two days that our friends at Stop &amp; Shop did two clinics, one at each store, we have reached an additional 600 people to be vaccinated. And I spoke to many of them as they were coming into Rockwell Park, and to the churches, and all of these different places that we set them up. And many of them cited either transportation issues. There is a gentleman at First Congregational Church who said, "Well, I can see this from my house, and I saw the sign, so I came over." A man talked to us off of his third-floor porch next to Muzzy Field last Thursday when we went to the baseball game, thanking us for putting up the police electronic sign at the entrance to the park, because he went over to get his vaccine. So there's all types of barriers, and as much as it appears at times to be needles in the haystack, we are doing that deeper dive into that next level. There's always going to be people who are concerned and choose not to get it, but for those that have barriers, if we can erase that, that's what our next phase is looking like. So I'm happy to announce that Griffin and the State Department of Health are coming back into Bristol. We're going to do a seven-day stretch starting on Friday at Rockwell Park Pavilion. Those hours will be noon until 6:00 to catch the people who might be working first shift and second shift. The one change to that schedule is on Saturday because we have an event that clinic will only run from 2:00 to 6:00. And then, we had great success last Saturday at the Bristol Soccer Clinic on Emmett Street, and I think it's because we also deployed the police electronic sign. So all of the people who live in that highly dense condo and apartment area saw the sign, and many of them came to the soccer club to get their vaccine. So we're going to go back there again on Saturday from 8:00 until 1:00. We're going to continue to look at some of these neighborhoods, and we again would like to make the offer that if there are organizations, churches, or any types of places that have high traffic, if you are interested in having a van, we could most likely arrange that. Community Health Centers is working with Lake Compounds, and I'm waiting on details for that. They're running a program, it's called the ABCs of Vaccines, amusement parks, beaches, and camps. So we'll be working with them to gain access into those areas. And we also have our friends from Stop &amp; Shop who have offered to do that as well, and also, all of the pharmacies in town do offer them. Many have changed to walk-in, no registration needed. So if any of you have people who are still vaccine hesitant, please encourage them to do that, especially now with the 12-16-year-olds coming onboard. We have a lot more vaccine being ordered. So Pfizer specifically is available in Bristol. Moving on to new business, the first item is the update on the American Rescue Plan Federal Aid and the creation of a task force. So we did speak of this at the joint meeting. I will again display, this is the guidance that we finally got, that we were so anxious to get. It's not as clear as I was hoping it would be, so as our controller referenced, we are jumping on a bunch of calls over the course of the next week to see if we can get some parameters. And I envision that our task force will meet shortly after the budget adoption to start working through this. But as I talked about earlier, I felt strongly that with $17 million coming directly to the city and an additional $11 million coming through our county allocation, that we need to be accountable and transparent. And in an election year, I am not going to allow this issue to be politicized because it's too important for Bristol, because we are on the edge of being able to create some extremely transformative policies, whether they be social service, outreach, physical improvements, infrastructure, or building for the future. This is an important day for Bristol. So to that end, I have asked several members to currently serve on critical boards and commissions to serve on this task force. I looked at two things, background, expertise areas. I looked at having a blend of people who represent the community, and I also wanted to include certain departments who most likely would receive the bulk of the funds, as well as add a layer of community stakeholders who could guide us through that process as well. So I'd like to just simply, for the record, present those names to the council and have a vote of endorsement for this task force, who will start working and hopefully go through the summer. The funds that we are allocated have a three-year shelf life, so there are some opportunities to do some strategic planning, as well as look at our existing budget to see if anything can be slotted over. The Board of Education is also receiving an allocation directly, as well as they are eligible for some additional funds that have come through. Their amount right now from the American Rescue Plan is $19 million. And then they have the ESAR grant and a few others that they're currently working to allocate. So what I've done, and I'll just start with this point so there's no confusion, these dollars will not be commingled. They are in charge of their $19 million. We are in charge of our $28 million. However, there are some areas of familiarity in terms of some of the parameters that both have to look at, including technology. So I thought it would be appropriate that we have somebody from the Board of Education act as a liaison to this task force and work with us to ensure that we are leveraging these dollars to the best of our ability. That person is going to be Commissioner Tom O'Brien. In addition to him, I've invited Cindy Bombard, who's the president and CEO of the Central Connecticut Chambers of Commerce, Orlando Calfee, who has an MBA in Finance and Real Estate, currently serving as the vice chair of the city's Board of Finance, and who works as an operations and services availability manager with IBM, Eric Clemmons, who's a retired ESPN commentator and president of the Bristol chapter of the NAACP, Michael Dumas, who's a member of the Public Works Commission, who holds an MBA in Finance and serves as an audit manager at People's United Bank, Mickey Goldwasser, a member of the city's Economic and Community Development Commission, who is the vice president and marketing and chief of staff at Payrails, which is a digital payments company, Glenn Hyzer, who's a member of the city's Tenure Capital Improvement and Strategic Planning Committee, who holds an MBA in Finance. Hyzer also serves as the chair of the Bristol Health Board of Directors right now. Malcolm Huckabee, who's a member of the City Parks Commission, he's the vice president of investments at Capital Securities Management, and he also serves as a men's college basketball analyst for ESPN. David Makowski, who's a member of the city's Board of Finance and has been an investment advisor for 32 years, currently serving within has been an investment advisor for 32 years, currently serving with Infinix Financial Group; Donna Osuch, president of the United Way of West Central Connecticut, who's responsible for a lot of the outcomes for community goals that we've talked about; City Councilman David Proleski, a practicing attorney, a retired banker, a member of our city's Economic and Community Development Commission; Susan Sudecki, president and CEO of the Main Street Community Foundation, a nonprofit public charity created by private citizens which serves donors in the region to build permanent charitable endowments to support our local communities; Howard Schmelder, vice chair of the city's Economic and Community Development Commission and a retired banker, who worked for Bristol Savings Bank and then Webster Bank prior to his retirement; and John Smith, the chair of our Bristol Board of Finance. And prior to his retirement, he was a teacher. He was our business administrator for the Board of Ed and also the senior vice president at Bristol Health. And following that, he was a consultant on various assignments prior to his full retirement. So of those 15 members, seven are Republicans, two are unaffiliated, and five are Democrats. And I just would like to again say that while I do not believe that political affiliation is going to be a driving force on this board, I want to make it clear that we are bipartisan and open to opinions and advice from everybody because this, again, is a very important opportunity for Bristol to transform and change our community for the better with the use of these funds. So with that, I would like to ask the council to endorse the names that I brought forward for this task force, and then we could get to work at the end of this month.
I'll move it if it's in the form of a motion.
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there a discussion? Okay. Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item under new business is the motion to disband the Rockwell Theater Task Force as it has completed its work. Those members have agreed to transition into being a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, which will in fact guide the fundraising and other tasks associated with not just the theater, but arts and culture in general. So may please have a motion to disband the Rockwell Theater Task Force and send the members a letter of thanks for their work.
So moved.
Discussion?
Yes. Your Honor, I would just like to thank the members, which was Samantha Bonifetti, Leah McCabe, Mark Mazzarella, Ken Bagley, and of course, Josh Mederos. They did a lot of work and it was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I believe we have one other new business item from Councilman Fortier.
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you for reminding me. There are two motion-picture companies interested in using Bristol locations in their films. The first, Call Jane, was recently featured in the Hartford Current with locations in Connecticut, including Hartford, West Hartford, Bristol, and East Hartford, and a Netflix holiday film called Noel Diaries. Both production companies are looking to shoot for one day each at the end of May. So, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to refer these matters to the Board of Public Works because the film companies may need to access city land for staging and parking.
Okay.
Second.
So, yes, that will need to go to the Public Works Board and then possibly in consultation with police for traffic if it rises to that level. So we can wait on that. So a referral to the Public Works Commission has been made and has been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pretty impressive, two films.
I should have said, I think Sigourney Weaver is in the Call Jane movie, so that's pretty cool.
Is there any other new business to come before the council?
Uh, sorry.
What would you like me to add?
We didn't vote on that.
Okay. First we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are you talking school readiness?
Yes.
Yes, that was next. Councilman Kelly, we have an item that we need to bring forward to make an amendment to a school readiness. Do you have that motion?
I do, Your Honor. I hereby move that amendment to Contract 20OECCDC01BRS between the City of Bristol and the State of Connecticut Office of Early Childhood to be added to the agenda as New Business Item 8(c).
Okay. Motion has been made to add the agenda item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Is there a motion to come forward?
Resolve that Mayor Alan Zapo Sasso, or Acting Mayor, is empowered to enter into amendments and to execute contractual instruments with the Office of Early Childhood of the State of Connecticut in the name of and on behalf of Bristol Preschool Childcare Center, Inc. for a child daycare program, which amendments pertain to Contract 20OECCD01BRS to increase the funding amount by $9,057.60 from $778,407.6 to $787,464.66, and change the term of the agreement to be 10/5/2020 to 6/30/2022.
Second.
Okay. Then, is this a resolution or a motion?
It's a resolution.
Okay. So the resolution has been read and seconded. Is there any discussion? So this is an amendment to the one that we've previously approved, increasing by $9,000? Okay. It is a resolution, so we will have a roll call vote starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Resolution is adopted. Okay. Any other new business? Hearing none, we will move to Item 9, which is resignations.
And there are no resignations, Your Honor.
Okay. Moving on to Item 10, which is appointments. We only have a couple. There are two for the Inland Wetlands Commission, which I believe is a mayor's appointment, and it is to reappoint James Karros and to reappoint Chet Reed for three-year terms through May of 2024.
Move it. Move the appointments, excuse me.
It's okay. And then the next one is to reappoint Jeffrey Hayden as an alternate member who had a Section 2-9 resignation for his unexpired term to July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Currently, I have a vacancy on the Freedom of Information Advisory Board, and I am looking for an unaffiliated or a Republican to serve on the Bristol Burlington Health District, which meets at 12:45 on the second Thursday of the month. And I am always looking for interested people to serve, especially on the land use boards, where we have some people coming up who have already told me that they are not going to ask for reappointments. So I always like to keep names handy for that.
Your Honor, may I ask, can you clarify the type of background that would be ideal for both of those positions? Just for anybody watching, they might not think they fit it, but they might.
I think for the Bristol Burlington Health District, you know, public health or community health outreach interest, not even as much expertise, would be important. And I think they also cover, you know, food, sanitation, and we share with Burlington, so there's oftentimes discussions about sewer and septic systems. But for the most part, it's a policy for public health. But it's really anybody who is also interested in that topic. You don't have to be an expert. And the same is for the land use boards, whereas it might be helpful coming in to read a map, you can also learn to read a map, and there's orientation for that as well. The Freedom of Information Advisory Board is something that was put into ordinance several years ago, and it's to keep government open and transparent. So I know one of the projects that they worked on was making uniforms, some of the agendas, and ensuring that minutes are clear and loaded onto the city website, those types of housekeeping items. So some of these boards are really anything that you want to make of it, too.
That's great. Okay. I think for whatever reason, when I heard the Burlington Health District, I was thinking I needed to find maybe like a nurse or a doctor, but really, it could be anybody with that interest or policy background, maybe even just a bachelor's degree in that area. So that's really interesting. Thank you.
Yes. And as people have heard me say before, all boards have to have a balance of political affiliation. So when I say I need an unaffiliated or a Republican, it's because the maximum has been reached for the other party. So that's what I'm looking for for Bristol Burlington Health District. That's an immediate need. And then there's, you know, again, a rolling need. There's different boards that come up every month, so you never know when there's going to be a resignation or vacancies, or people choose to join another board and create vacancies. So it's always good to have a file. So if anybody is interested in any of the boards, the best thing to do is look at Agenda Center, and you will get the whole list of the boards and commissions that exist.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor, do you want to reannounce just the three members on the Building Committee?
I could do that.
Well, one is your appointment.
Yes. So the Green Hill School Building Project Committee needs to be reannounced. We have received from the Board of Education the name of Commissioner John Skalenka, who will serve as their representative. John Smith will serve as the representative of the Board of Finance, and I am appointing Mary Fortier to represent the city council on that committee. And then they have begun the process, or will begin the process, of selecting additional committee members to serve.
We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So that being said, we are now into the last portion of our agenda. I will ask the city clerk to take over for Items 11 through 19.
Approval of change orders to Demoto Downs, a joint venture totaling a credit of $1,754.51 for the Memorial Boulevard Intra-District Arts Magnet School, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Proleski, what does the $1,754.51 change order consist of?
Well, actually, Your Honor, it's several change orders ranging from shoring up the steel on the stairwell number one, drywall changes, lighting fixtures changes, wall anchors in the electrical room, and some flooring changes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Your Honor.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12, award of contract 2c21055b, Pecuabic River Conduit Culvert Rehabilitation to Schultz Corporation for $579,055.48, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Your Honor, I know that I've asked about this in other committee meetings before, but I know that we typically award bids to the lowest bidder in a lot of cases. I mean, I'm just curious, like, in the future, do we think that is the most effective way to hand out bids? Do we give any?
We've talked about this. There is a local preferential bidding piece attached to it, but right now, that is how our bidding and purchasing requirements read.
Okay. All right. Makes sense, obviously, from a financial standpoint, but I was just curious. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13, resolution regarding approval of the 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, and to refer to the Board of Finance. And there is a resolution to read?
Your Honor, I do have the resolution. And do you want me to list the organizations in addition?
Sure. I think so.
Be it hereby resolved by the city council of the city of Bristol, Connecticut, that the 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, as approved by the Economic and Community Development Board on May 6th, 2021, is hereby approved, and that the mayor or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents relating to this grant, including final agreements, and to submit all required documents to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for its approval and allocation of funds. Be it further resolved that the annual action plan be referred to the Board of Finance for action regarding the appropriation of funds, subject to final approval by HUT. And I'm just scrolling to tell us how the allocation is listed. The total of the grant is $702,049, and there is as follows: to the housing rehabilitation program, $288,092 to support staff, $114,555 planning and administration, $102,885 fair housing, $3,000; Bristol Boys and Girls Club outreach, $20,000; Shepherd Meadows therapeutic riding, $10,000; Prudence Crandall Shelter Services, $10,000; Bristol Adult Education: Introduction to Manufacturing, $25,000; Family Resource Centers, $4,000; United Way Summer Youth Employment, $4,000; HRA Case Manager, $20,000; YWCA of New Britain Sachs, $5,093; City of Bristol Sidewalk Infrastructure, $37,924; Bristol Recovery Club Kitchen Upgrade, $12,500; Comanetsky Estates Bristol Housing Authority Elevator Upgrade, $10,000; Bristol Adult Resource Center Roof, $25,000; and lastly, the Neighborhood Housing Services of New Britain, $10,000.
Thank you. Has there been a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. So Councilman Rosato?
I'll abstain.
Okay. So Councilman Rosato is going to abstain due to his service as a board member at Bristol Boys and Girls Club. All those others?
Your Honor, I think I would have to abstain as a board member of HRA as well.
Okay. And?
I have to abstain as well, Your Honor.
Okay. Comanetsky.
Thank you.
So then would I need to abstain? I mean, I'm the liaison, I'm not on their board.
No, no. It's financial interest or... All right. So we have Councilman Rosato, Councilman Proleski, and Councilwoman Fortier, who have roles with organizations set to receive funds, who will be recusing themselves per the agreement and the paperwork that you signed earlier this year. So with three recusals, we will have four members voting. And it is a resolution, so we will start on my far right.
Yes.
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 And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes for nothing with three abstentions. Thank you.
Item 14, to approve submission of a $2,000 grant to Thomaston Savings Bank Foundation to repair an historic fence in Old North Cemetery, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary, and to refer to the Board of Finance.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now we're at the section where we have four executive sessions, so I will ask Corporation Counsel Clift to come forward and review those four, and tell us who will be joining us in those four sessions.
Okay. Number 15, it's a tax appeal matter, and that will be Attorney Tom Conlin and our assessor, Tom Dunno. Number 16, Tom, did you want me to go in on that one as well, and myself? I'll go in on all of them. The executive session to discuss exempt records pertaining to test questions, scoring and other data exam, exam data, user-administer exams for the fire chief selection, will be our Human Resources Director, Mark Penny, and myself. Number 17, again, another tax matter, Attorney Conlin, our assessor, and myself. And number 18, the entire Corporation Council staff, Richard Lacy, Jeff Stee, Attorney Tom Conlin, myself. And Madam Clerk, I'll let you know if we need to, we may, we would have Attorney Rosenthal, Lawrence Rosenthal, on standby, but I will let you know if he does join us by phone.
On item 16, we had Commissioners Ben Venuto and Commissioners Jandro joining us as well.
Yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner Anthony Venuto and Commissioner Dana Jandro, that would be on number 16. I'm sorry. I wrote that down in the corner of my notes, and I missed it. So, thank you.
All right. So we will now make a motion to convene into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will be back. Okay. Okay, we're going to reconvene back into public session, like the record to show that we took no votes while in executive session on any of these matters. For the four items that were in executive session, are there any motions to come forward at this time?
I have a motion, Your Honor. I move that the litigation matter of 1235 Farmington Avenue BRLLC versus City of Bristol Superior Court Docket Number HHB-CV-20-6059764-S be settled by stipulated agreement, and that the city assessor be authorized to adjust the 2019 grand list value at $10,850,000. I further move that the Corporation Counsel be authorized to execute the stipulation on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mayor, can we get a vote to come back into public session?
Sure, Teresa, if you would like one.
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come out of executive session?
Do I have to repeat that motion?
Okay. Do you want her to repeat it?
What do you think, Dale?
I move that the litigation matter of 1235 Farmington Avenue BRLLC versus City of Bristol Superior Court Docket Number HHB-CV-206059764-S be settled by stipulated agreement, and that the city assessor be authorized to adjust the 2019 grand list value at $10,850,000. I further move that the Corporation Counsel be authorized to execute the stipulation on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come forward from executive session?
I have a motion, Your Honor, on item 17. I hereby move that the litigation matter Festival Fund Parks LLC versus the City of Bristol Superior Court Docket Number HHB-CV-206059739 be resolved by stipulation to judgment pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 12-81P whereby the city shall abate the personal property taxes owed on the October 1, 2019 grand list by the amount of $69,717.73. I hereby, I further move that the Corporation Counsel or Assistant Corporation Counsel is authorized to execute this stipulated judgment on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come before the City Council?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a resolution. Be it resolved that pursuant to Section 42i of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the mayor and city council hereby exercise their prerogative and reject the appointment received from the Board of Fire Commissioners for the Office of Chief of Fire Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Your Honor, a resolution.
Roll call vote starting on my far right?
Yes.
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 The Chair votes yes. The resolution is approved. With no other business to come before the panel, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.